Alfred, come on up.
Hopefully, uh, silence your cellphone.
Oh, yes, if you could silence your cellphone. Like I said, this will be live. If you have questions at the end. Uh, I want to introduce Alfred. I've, I've met him here. He's been here a few times. You have 20 minutes. Give your, uh, your whole talk on whatever you'd like. And whenever you're done, just, we'll open it up for questions. And please use this mic. And you can adjust it and pull it off if you want.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Alfred Benavides, and I want, first of all, thank the Lord that we're here. We're alive. We have no excuse to do good while we're alive. Uh, I also want to thank the Sons of Liberty for hosting this event. Uh, I haven't seen any other organization that does it, and we're doing a, they're doing a great job. I also want to thank the audience for coming here this evening. It takes, uh, it takes a lot of effort to come here on Monday night in football, and it's going on right now. And, uh, so I want to start off by, um, saying that I come from a very humble family. Hold on. So, I want to start off with scripture. My campaign is scripture-based. Like we said, we talked about the Ten Commandments. We need to work on that. We keep God at the forefront. Otherwise, our nation will never work. Uh, the first one I want to read goes along with what I believe in. It goes like this. It's First Kings, chapter three, verse nine. And it goes like this. "And now, O Lord, my God, you have made your servant king in this place of my father, David. Although I am not just a little child, I do not know how to go about and to come in. Your servant is in the midst of these people, to whom you have chosen, a great people, so numerous that cannot be numbered, so counted. Give your servant therefore an understanding mind, to govern your people, able to discern good from evil, who can govern your great people." And I call this the city of Hanford. The other one I come to is Proverbs nine. That was King Solomon. King Solomon was given wisdom. It goes like this. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and do not lean on your own understanding. For all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make yours paths straight." People? These are two scriptures that I have really put myself involved. King Solomon and King David were given the task to govern their people. I believe in God, the Ten Commandments, and everything that's written in the scripture in this book. If it's not here...
That's gonna come through way louder.
Oh, wow. Okay. So, wow, that's a big time. I feel like a giant now. Anyway, so, I'm a Christian man. I'm a registered Republican. Um, my family goes back to being Republicans while I was in the 1700s, back in the day. Uh, my great-grandfather was, uh, Captain Rufio Benavides and Colonel Santuvis of the Thirty-third Cavalry Brigade of the Confederate Army in 1861. You can look that up. I'm a humble man. I'm Gregory. Uh, my father and Lucy is my mother. I, I was born in, in Los Angeles. I came to Hanford in 1961. And there, I came to Lee Richmond, went to Wilson, and finally, I graduated from Hanford High in 1975. Um, I went to UC Santa Cruz, majored in Biology, minor in Chemistry. I went to U.S.A.L. after that and got my, and I, uh, I got into the Master's in Public Administration program. I transferred to Southern State because I got married and I had to be close to my wife in San Jose. And then, uh, so I did a lot of public administration, like the financing and, uh, human resources and all the things that you need to know to help run a city. So, I'm, I got my background in that. And then, I got my Masters in Education, and right now, I'm in the Masters in Public Ministri-- uh, Master's in Business Administration at University of Phoenix. Why am I doing this? Because I believe that the candidate, the person should be prepared, not only with God's scripture, but academics. Okay? Uh, and I was in, when I was in San Jose, I was elected to the Allen Rock School Board. I served there for four years. I was the Vice President of the NRA there and made sure that we had a right to bear guns. And I hope we have the same here. Uh, I was Housing Commissioner in San Jose. I was a board member of the Downtown Business Association and made sure that our downtown would not fall apart, which it did. Hanford's downtown is getting there slowly, but we need to help out the business there. I was also the board member of the Business Association, the American Jihad Forum, and the Police Activities League, and the Rotary Club. Uh, let's see here. When I came to Hanford back in '04, because my mother was dying, I was a Realtor also, like Kimber is. I was a Realtor for Holly McKay, American Dream, and London Properties. And I expect to get my broker's license this November, aside from what I'm doing. I was your high school board trustee in '04 to '08. I was elected to do a purpose. I helped bring in the Sierra Pacific High School along with Bob Hill, Danny Todd, John Draxler, Simon Lacritz into this school because our children needed a COS campus, and we built it, and it's here, right now, on 13th Avenue. So, I make sure that I do what I have to do. Uh, also, I, um, like I said, I, I'm a former, I, I worked with Donnie Blaine in real estate. I know, Kimber knows the Blaine real estate over there to Larry. Uh, very good friends of mine. Keith passed away not too long ago. I have four children, uh, four nurses, one doctor. I have four beautiful grandchildren. And, uh, I just want to say that, you know, I, I'm really honored to be here. You know, it's, it takes a lot to run for city council. There's a lot of, uh, misgivings, information that's so much that we have to comprehend. We have to listen to you. We have to act on it and take action, you know? The things we're gonna talk about. The park, uh, the, the roundabout. I'm not for the roundabout. I'm for the park. Uh, I want to thank Bob Romels. He was a great man to help stop that roundabout, you know? Bob, thank you so much. Good man. I really am honored to know him. And I also want to say that we need to support our Hanford City newspaper. Uh, you know, social media has gone so crazy lately, right? You know, that, that we don't know what's true, what's true anymore, or what's false. But I do know that the Hanford Sentinel is a heartbeat of this town. I brought 50 newspapers and 50 subscriptions. I challenge you to subscribe. We gotta support the Hanford Sentinel. They're there for us. We gotta be there for them too. And that's what I have to say for my introduction. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Alfred. Awesome. Let me find out a little bit about Alfred. All right? A lot of stuff I didn't know.
Yeah.
I like that. All right, are there any questions from the public? Yes?
Hi, Alfred. I'm Christine Leach. I've been here...
Nice to meet you, Christine.
Fifty-something years.
Oh.
I know I look 25.
Don't worry, I'm older than you. I'm older than you.
Yeah, yeah, you are. Um, anyway...
Hey, thank you very much.
I want to, I'm gonna ask the same questions for all three candidates.
Sure.
So, tell us about transparency, because that's been an issue, you know, in our city government.
Yeah.
And tell us how you're gonna show us transparency, what are you gonna do about it, um, if you were to get elected and get this job.
Well, good question. Transparency is important. We need to know what's going on in terms of information and not government. If, you know, they say, "People in, people out," right? We gotta have good information. First thing I would do, I would tear down that wall as a city hall. I don't know why it's there. They put a wall up there, and I used to go up there and feel at ease talking to the city manager, the city clerk. But to me, it's almost like now going to Oz, where you have that big wall, right? Everybody seen The Wizard of Oz? You knock on the door, "I come to see the great and wonderful Oz." We need to tear it down. We need to tear that down, folks. We need to come in there and feel like we're welcome in city hall. Number two, I want to have my number out. Uh, oh, that was for me. I, I, I want to put a, an office where people can come in the community, drop in, have a cup of coffee, donuts, a set time and set date. Uh, I want to put things out where people can understand who I am and what I'm all about. I shoot straight, I aim hard, and I butt my butt to the bone. You know, I, I've proven myself on the school board, I've proven myself with my children, I've proven myself in the downtown. Give me a chance, and I'll show you what I can do. And I will be honest with you.
I have one more question.
Yes.
And now, I know you shared with us your academic accomplishments.
Sure.
As far as your work history, can you give us some examples that, um, show us that you're a leader and not a follower?
Sure.
Because that's what we need. We need people that maybe they won't go along with, um, what the city manager, what the city government, fellow council members, the roundabout, you mentioned that.
No.
You know, and thank God it didn't go through yet. But, um, tell us some history about you that's gonna show us that you're a leader and not a follower.
Okay. First of all, my first job, I was the Senior Health Planning Specialist and Manager for the Santa Clara Health and Hospital Systems. I was in charge of a $200 million budget, offices from Palo Alto to Gilroy. I had nursing staff, educational staff, staff analyst, all that under me. I did that for about 20 years. Then, I got into, involved the NRA. I'm a full member of the NRA in San Jose, Silicon Valley. I believe that we should have the right to bear arms. We should be able to protect ourselves in case our government melts. Um, I really feel that, um, that I'm the kind of man that, that I've been involved like in many boards, the, the Board of the United Way Agency, Toastmasters, Rotary Club, and, and things like that. I don't, I'm not a follower. I like to lead. They call me the Mexican John Wayne. I don't know. Somebody's gotta do it, right? You know, I might have my shit kickers here, but I get things done, you know? And, uh, I don't want to mess around. I don't like to dilly-dally. If I want to hear from the source, I go straight to the face. And, and, uh, I think the Hanford Sentinel already knows about that. I went over there and talked with the general manager, and I said, "We gotta do something about this here." And I brought the paper. I said, "I'm gonna make sure that each one of you get a piece of, the, the, the Hanford Sentinel and support him." I'm not a shy guy, as you can tell. I used to be a Mexican waterro back in the day, but something changed in me. I don't know what it was. Must've been my mom, my grandmother, and my daddy. So, yes, I'm not a follower, I'm a leader.
All right. And I want to point out that, uh, Ms. Leach, that was a excellent question.
Excellent question.
When you ask your questions, make sure they can be answered, and they are not statements of your opinion. So, we'd appreciate it if everybody would kind of keep to that format. It makes the whole interview way better.
Should the city lease, excuse me, should the city lease or sell its historic buildings such as the, um, Bastille, the courthouse, the old post office? And why is that your position?
You know, those are sacred buildings to our town. Anything that's sacred should not be sold. We don't sell the church. We don't sell things that are precious to our heart. The Bastille, the Superior Dairy, I'm still trying to get that one open for us. And then, I'm, and that's gonna be one of my projects down the road, you know? And everybody knows that, uh, the mayor knows I've been finding, well, I'm really interested in getting that open for us, you know? But I believe we should not sell it. It's like selling our country. Would you sell your country? No. We're doing that right now to China and other countries right now. I feel that we should keep what's ours, is ours. Don't ever turn around and let that go. The day you do that, you're not an American citizen, you're not a citizen of Hanford. We must hold tight to our, our heritage, our history, and all that, and makes who we are. So, no, I would not sell it. I would keep it, and I'll make sure of that.
Hi, Alfred.
Hi, Dave. I know, not Don, that's Dave. My good buddy Dave.
So, if you're fortunate enough to get elected...
Yes, sir.
You will be involved, the first thing is a gold-setting session amongst, between yourself and the four other elected officials.
Yes, sir.
So, going into that gold-setting session, what are gonna be your three top priorities that you feel is important?
First of all, I need to pray about it. And I will, like I did right now. I'm a scripture-based man, I'm a faith man. I'm going to listen to my colleagues, because I have yet to know our fine mayor that's sitting right there. He's a good man, a reputable man. He's a good teacher. I've been there, I'm a substitute teacher, and I hear a lot of good things about you. Okay? I need to understand our, our members, where they come from, what they believe, and what they stand for. That's number one. And number two, prayer and know my colleagues. Number three, know what, uh, what my people want for their city, because I'm not the one that's gonna run and make decisions for the town. I'm gonna use your input, your opinion, your desires, your fears, to dictate how I'm gonna act. God first, well, my girlfriend second, I'm married, I'm married, and my people, okay? And my family. I don't like to mess around. I don't like the dilly-dally, but I do have grace, respect, and honor. My family's heritage has brought grace, respect, and honor. I don't call it politics. In my vocabulary, I call it public service. There's a difference between the two. I don't stand to gain anything. I don't stand to gain any kind of, being a city councilman, I have no ties. I'm just here because my heart's in it for you guys and to do it right. It's the American way, it's, uh, for me, Republican way, to shoot straight and do it right. Good job. Well done.
Uh, Mr. Benavides, I want to say we have about four minutes left on his time. So, if you'd like to field one more question, or would you like to have a closing statement?
Adam, over here.
Yes, sir.
All right. Two questions, let's make them quick.
All right.
That was a beautiful statement in terms of following through with what you say.
Yes, sir.
But I gotta be sincere. We all have heard politicians that have said that.
I'm a public servant, sir.
So, how do we know that you're gonna follow through with the promises you've made to the citizens of Hanford tonight?
Okay. On that table shows me that I'm with Bob Hill as a trustee. Your town, my town, asked for a new high school. Your town, my town, asked... Are you, what was his name again?
Chris.
Jordan. How you doing? Man, boy, nice to see you again. Give me a hug, buddy, man. Oh, man, that's my buddy Jordan, man. Oh, I love you, man. Nice to see you again. Oh, my gosh. Oh, yeah. Oh, man, I have a lot of respect for Chris, man. He's a great sheriff in this town, man. Okay. Anyways, on the table, I was a school board trustee. I was elected, I didn't just attend the meetings, I challenged the, the other trustees and ourselves. I challenged, uh, well, at that time, it was Marie Bonuelos, but that, we changed that, you know, back in the day. So, look what I've done over here in Hanford. See that I bring the school to you? Did I bring the COS campus with my fellow trustees, like Danny Todd, John Draxler, Bob Hill, rest in peace, Simon Lacritz? We did it. You ask them, "Do your kid, any of your kids go to the COS campus?" If you do, it was our effort, not mine, it was our effort, but the Lord goes to God first. And did I bring the next high school? Yes. I'm gonna tell you a little secret about that high school. It should've not been the Bears. It was a two-to-two vote, two for the Bears and two for the Timberwolves. There was a new trustee that came in, this little, little, little joker. And I said, and that new trustee came in, Emma Perez. I don't know if you know Emma Perez. He goes, "Emma, we got the Huskies, we got the Bears. What makes sense to you?" "Well, Alfred, I like the Yogi Bear and Boo Boo Bear." So, and three, two for the Bears, and we got the Bears now. So, what does that tell you? It tells you every decision that you make has a long-term consequence. The decision you make for city council is gonna have a long-term consequence. If you want a fighter, I'm the man. If you want a follower, well, I'm not that person. Okay? So, I honor and respect you for being here, for the goodness of the grace of my Lord God, and you people being here, and also for the Sons of Liberty, Hanford Sentinel. Ms. Maderos is the facilitator.
We want to turn, Alfred, we still have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I promised this young man that he was gonna get, he'll get the last word in. So, his last question for Mr. Benavides.
Alfred, thank you for taking my question. Um, you know, in this day and age, LGBTQ, uh, community, they're getting stronger and stronger. If they want to have a parade that goes downtown, are you gonna vote for it, or will you deny it?
Okay.
Two, two minutes, Alfred.
Okay. I said I was a man of God. The Lord says, if you can, if you're, if you're not either hot or cold, what's he gonna do? He's gonna spit you out. You can't be lukewarm. You gotta be right or wrong. If you go to the scripture, look at Romans, chapter one, verses eight through 32. What does the Lord say about that? He said, "That a man should never lie with a man. A woman should never lie with a woman." The Lord God does not make mistakes. We do. We have desires of the flesh. We make mistakes. So, it says in the Bible, "Anyone that condones it will also be condemned." I myself, I don't want my family to be condemned. I have, I have families that are, you know, uh, lesbian, gay, but you know what I can do? Best thing to do for my folks is to pray for them. Praying for them for intervention, for light to shine upon them. But without the Lord God, you're not gonna save our family. I will say another thing you want you to keep in mind, and they told me not to say it, but I'll say it anyways, because I'm not the kind of shy guy that I am, you know? Next month, there's gonna be a, a group, a downtown. It's not God, and that admits. So, I want you to think about that. Okay? I won't say what it is, but if you're a God, if you're a person, woman and man, we need to start doing something about that. We can't make money just on things of any choice. We have to make things for God, country, our nation, and our town. There are no second places. It's either all or nothing, and that's what Benavides is all about. All or nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benavides. Thank you. Alfred, you wanna grab your stuff?
Oh, hold up.
Uh, Kimber Regan drew the number two slot, and so we have the privilege now of listening to Kimber. Kimber, I will give you also the 24 minutes that Mr. Benavides got. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Kimber Regan.
I'm gonna back this up. I'm gonna back this up. Okay, first of all, everybody that knows me knows I get off track and I talk too much. So, I literally wrote down what I'm gonna say. So, I apologize, but I'm gonna read to you, okay? Um, hi, as many of you know, I'm Kimber Regan. I was torn on running, and the night before I entered the race, I prayed and asked God for direction. I asked God to put it in my heart if it was His plan and to take it out of my head if it wasn't. The next morning, I knew I had to do this. In other words, I'm running with God's direction and for the love of the city. My attendance at most city council meetings shows my commitment to knowing what the community and city are dealing with. I have missed very, very few over the last two or three years. After two years of fighting local government because of, in my opinion, poor choices, including the downtown roundabout and the little-known five-acre homeless shelter they were building by the new Marriott's behind Walmart and Target, this would've been horrendous for the businesses near 12th and the mall, and all but destroyed the Marriott. And the roundabout, if you're familiar with what a fiasco that would be if the current city council forces it to be built, I'm familiar because my office has been next to the proposed location for almost 19 years. I have been their loudest adversary and have avidly fought against it and actually thought we had won. But council has it back on the agenda for tomorrow night, so if anybody doesn't, isn't in favor of it, please be there or reach out to the current city council. As for the homeless shelter, it was similar to the North Park, North Star project, as this homeless shelter was being hidden from the public. We need change. Our previous city council and the current council lack transparency. There is out-of-control spending, disconnect with the people, meetings and votings at a time that is not convenient for the working public. There is a disregard for the constituents. We need to change the time and the format of the meetings to make it accommodate the public's needs and to include their input. As a resident of Hanford since 1969, I understand the needs of our community. I have been passionately engaged in our county and know the importance of moving forward without destroying what makes Hanford great. I have been married to my husband, Scott, for nearly 40 years. I'm the mother of Marissa, Michaela, Marina, and Monica, and grandma to Aiden, Katie, Kayden, Carter, Kendall, Sage, and Santiago. They are my motivation to fight what I see happening in our hometown. I appreciate that this is our town and yours, and we need the decision-makers for our community to listen to us all. As the owner-broker of Help You Sell Real Estate, working with people has been my passion for almost 23 years. Because of the nature of the business, I discuss the needs of the people and find out what is important to them, so I have a pretty good feel for what is significant to our residents. I have owned several businesses, I have been very involved in the community, and have years of experience organizing and running events. Some examples are 14 years of cheering Hanford's overgrad, nine years of Santas for seniors, nine years of Salvation Army Christmas tree for kids, and one of my favorites was a kids' team for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life for seven years, with the last year, 175 kids on my team at the overnight event. I've participated with a lot of other charities and events. I am deeply invested in Hanford and making it and Kings County better than ever. I don't have any fancy degrees, but my education and experience is extensive. I am committed to our community. We need more job opportunities through vocational training. We need more opportunities, activities, and choices for our youth. We have important things that we need to do. We need to improve public safety and fight our homeless crisis by working with multiple agencies, prosecute criminals, and make Hanford a tough-on-crime city, complete Hidden Valley Park with creative financing, um, and I personally would love to have a pump track like Corcoran has for the bikes. Explore ways to revise the jewellets of Hanford, the Bastille and the Hanford Courthouse, not risk it being destroyed like the Hanford High School building or the fire station next to the plunge. Work with other government agencies and school districts to seek areas to work together and help each other. An example is several years ago, COS, the city, and Hanford High School went together to form a hundred, form a 180-acre facility using all three funding sources. One couldn't have completed it alone, but together, they were able to stretch the tax dollar. They need to, we need to change the meeting times of the city council meetings to accommodate working people. Having meetings start at four or five o'clock does not work. Voting after 7:00 p.m. with public comments after presentations and before voting is a must. Explore grants and other opportunities before raising taxes. More vocational training and job opportunities for our youth as well as adults and seniors. And we need to be more business-friendly. Shop locally and try to take and create businesses here in town like Olive Garden and others that people have said that they want. I have fought hard to stop the downtown roundabout and the five-acre homeless shelter that was to be built behind Target and Walmart. We were able to move the shelter to an 11-acre location that can help Hanford residents. And as far as the roundabout is concerned, we thought we had won, but we are still battling the city council, and it's on the agenda again tomorrow night, like I said. Please come. Regardless of the tax initiative, I have mixed emotions on it. I do not believe that it'll pass because the public does not trust our council to manage it well. But our law enforcement and fire departments do need our help. We pay our government officials way too much, and the people that protect us not enough. If the tax initiative did not pass, we might need to do a special initiative just for police and fire. As far as my campaign is concerned, thus far, I'm self-funded. I have been endorsed by the California Corrections Peace Officer Association, which is an honor Peace Officer Association, which is an honor I'm thankful for. I'm also endorsed by the Kings County Republican Central Committee. But please note, as city council is a nonpartisan position, I will be honored to represent all parties if elected. We deserve, you deserve, a city council that is respected, not resented, inclusive, not exclusive, a council for the people, not above the people, one that cherishes our hometown and won't destroy it, to have a city council like Lemoore and other communities where the city council is representative of the community and does not treat the public as if they are insignificant. I will hold my head high because I know I'm voting and doing what the people of this city have elected me to do, to always remember that the decisions made by the council will affect the city not only for today but for generations to come. I do want to be a voice for the people, be accessible, and have Hanford City Council a positive voice for the community and a voice for the people. I would love to have your support and your vote. For the love of the people, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Kimber? Yep. We'll start here with Ms. Leach, and you can ask your three, three questions.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Talk to us about transparency. What are you going to do to address that? Then also, talk about being a leader, a follower, what, what's your work history? You know, that could help you if you're not, you know. Anyway, thank you, Kimber.
I, in forest, as far as transparency, I think transparency and accessibility need to go hand-in-hand. We have, we need to take and have it to where if we say something, we mean it, and we're only saying the truth. Everybody that knows me knows if you ask me a question, I'm going to answer it. Doesn't matter whether it's something I necessarily want to tell you. I'm going to tell you the truth. I'm not going to lie to you. I have a policy of I'm not going to take and try to remember lies. We need to take and have it to where the city council is approachable by the public, and if you have a question and everything, you can take and reach out. As a realtor, everybody, anybody that knows me or any of my clients know, I have my business card. I have my cellphone number on my business card. My office phone is forwarded to my home phone, I mean, to my cellphone, and I answer my phone every night up until 11:00. If somebody has a question, call me. It doesn't bother me at all. And a city count, as a city councilman, I will do the same thing. I want to be accessible. If you have a question, if you have a concern, I want to be reached out to. In regards to what has led me to this, I work with people on a daily basis, talk to people all the time, find out what their needs or wants are, and that's part of what the city council is. I need to take and, we need to take and have it to where we're listening to the public. That's the biggest problem. We've had the public, downtown merchants, all of the clients of downtown merchants and the public in general for the last two years have said, "We don't want a roundabout." We've been ignored. They are taking and still taking, and we're having to fight it. When, at the city council meeting, whenever the, the motion died for the $506,000, we all looked around and was like, "We won. We won." And then to find out that it's back on the agenda tomorrow night is just like a slap in the face. It's like we're insignificant. We don't matter. And it's got to change. Next question? Oh, what has led me to be, in regards to, also, with all the different events that I've shared, I have community contacts. What I would like to do, do this, I mean, I haven't explored exactly how we could take and do it, but one of the things that I've thought of is in regards to the, and this is a thought I've had and everything, and anyway, in regards to the complex that's happening over there for the, the sports complex, I would love if we were to rethink that $1.2 million thing spent. I would love if we bought really nice portable bathrooms that during other times might be used for other things, but end up taking and having the different food merchants, the different taco trucks, the chicken shack, and some of the other places like that, be able to take and go over there so they can take and earn income and have it where they're renting those spaces from us so it's becoming an income-revenue thing. At the park commission meeting last week, I was told that they, Hidden Valley Park isn't going to happen unless there is extra taxes of $1,200 per household being sent out to residents. That's what I was told by Brad Albert, okay? I don't like that idea, okay? We need to take and have resources. We don't need to just fund a new park on the other side of town and have that be a shining star. We've got Hidden Valley Park that's been ignored for all of these years. And, but if we were to take and do those bathrooms, like I said, and pull a million dollars possibly for that to be used towards the park, if downtown, instead of taking and doing the roundabout that nobody wants, everybody loves the stop signs there. They're working perfect. If they were to leave the stop signs the way that they are, spend $2 million fixing sidewalks and things that are important to the neighbors, I mean, important to the merchants downtown, and pull $2 million over there to the park. And I personally, I would reach out to some of our major employers in our area and see if I can get them to fund some different locations at the park and basically for having namesake on it. So, I mean, there's different ways to do creative financing. We've just got to take and have people that are going to take and, and, you know, put in the effort to take and do it. And with, with some of the things that I've done, like Sober Grad and all of those things, I have no problem with asking people in the community to take and work together to accomplish stuff.
Thank you. Thank you. Next question, please.
Do you believe or think that the city should sell or lease its historic buildings such as the Bastille and the courthouse? And why do you stand, or what, why is that your position?
I went to Hanford High School. I graduated in seventy-seven. And I watched the wrecking ball hitting the old historic high school. And I sat there and was one of the kids that was cheering whenever that was happening. I, we need to take and protect our historic buildings. The idea of them ever being sold or being torn down like the Firehouse or that building is, is something that we should be ashamed of even considering. We can take and find ways to take and get those revitalized. It's very important. We need to protect them. And in regards to, I mean, I would say lease them out, the idea of taking and doing like a lease for a dollar for a hundred years or ninety-nine years, I know that that's something that people could possibly do, but we just need to take and think. I'm sure that there are some different businesses or, I mean, even if we did GoFundMe things or whatever, I think that people would basically get behind his. I, I, back in, in the eighties, I actually worked for Max Walden. My office was upstairs in the Bastille. Okay, I've heard the ghost. They're really there, okay? But, but I mean, I, I worked there for Max Walden and everything upstairs. And I know that we don't need to take and get rid of our historic buildings. What Jack, Jack is the one that was just speaking, what Jack has done with the Carnegie is amazing. It's brought, revitalized it. We need to take, another thing that Hanford used to have that most people don't realize or have forgotten about is we used to have a visitor disagency. The city used to fund it. I actually worked on, worked with them and everything and used to do advertising for them and put out a publication that went out to everybody. And, but we need to take and find ways to bring people into town.
Thank you. Thank you. One more question here?
Same question. When you, if you're fortunate enough to become a council member in the gold-setting session, what's going to be your top three priorities going into that gold-setting session?
Well, we're looking at probably a month or two away. I mean, it could change. I mean, as it is right now, I'm going to take and do everything I can to preserve downtown. We need to take and fight our homeless issues. And then one of the main, main things is we need to take and help our police officers with public safety. And crime, I'm going to fore, but public safety and crime goes hand-in-hand. We need to take and work with our law enforcement and find ways to take and make sure that whenever they go, whenever they put their lights on the line to take and arrest people, we need to make sure that they get prosecuted. Find a way. And we need to take and make it to where if people are going to commit crimes in town, they need to, if people are going to commit crimes, we need to take and make sure that they want to commit them in some other county than Kings County. You can tell I'm nervous, you guys. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you. Next question, please.
Kimber?
Yes.
Question. You know, in Kings County, Hanford especially, Hanford especially, we have very capable people running the city. And how would you feel as to having the city manager and the department heads all from the city of Hanford as versus importing them from Visalia?
I, I feel like Hanford should be ran by Hanford. I feel like city council needs to basically take control and run this town. As it stands right now, I feel like city council isn't necessarily running it. I feel like our city manager is the one that's basically telling us what to do. And I don't, I don't like that. I feel like, I feel like there's a lot of things from the top down that need to be looked at. I know that that's not a very good position to have in regards to going into something that I'm going to possibly be doing, but I feel like we need to relook at some of the things and rethink it. I think that we've got too many lawsuits happening in Hanford. I feel like we need to take and find ways to cut some of the insurance costs that we're paying because of the lawsuits. I don't know whether it's, it's, we need to take and, might need to think about getting new council representative. We just need to take and make sure that we're taking our town back, and we need to all do it together.
Thank you. Next question?
Kimber, you made a statement that you were concerned that the city council meets earlier at four o'clock, five o'clock in the afternoon rather than a lot of those decisions being made at the later evening meeting. Why do you think they changed the meeting times to earlier times?
My honest opinion or my, there are certain things that are happening in this town that I don't like. I feel like city council has taken over, and I feel like we are not being respected. I had taken at a Sons of Liberty, I'm throwing a couple of people under the bus right now, and I apologize, but a few weeks ago at a roundabout here at the Sons of Liberty meeting, it came up, Bob Ramos had read the minute, read the minutes as to what was going to be on the meeting. And one of the things that was brought up was the downtown HOA or HIA taxes. Back in the seventies, the residents of Hanford decided to double-tax themselves to take and have extra funds to do things downtown. Well, at that meeting, it was discussed, it was said that they were going to be bringing it on the table, and they were going to take and possibly be turning it over to Main Street. And I said, "No." I said, "With me owning a real estate office downtown, I probably pay more taxes than anybody else downtown." And I said, "I don't want it to take and be done that way." We need to take and bring it back to, to the merchants downtown or the people in the HIA district and everything else, and it needs to be discussed. The next night was the meeting where we thought we had won on the roundabout. Well, what ended up happening was I find out later whenever I read the Hanford Sentinel, which I absolutely love. Everybody needs to subscribe to it. I do. Anyway, but we need to support our local paper. But on Saturday, I read the article, and I found out that that same day, at the early meeting, they had voted, which was less than twenty-four hours before I said, "Don't do it," they voted to take and turn it over to Main Street. And I have a problem with that. I have a problem with us not being listened to. And it's got to, it's got to change. We need to take and have control. And I believe that the four and the five o'clock meetings, the reason they started doing that, and I don't have any proof on this, but my personal opinion is the four and the five o'clock meetings are if they can take and vote stuff through whenever there's nobody there because most of us are working, and at that time, they can take and get it through and everything, and it's a done deal. And I don't like it. It's got to change.
Thank you. Next question, please.
Hi, I believe I heard you say something about more youth activities. Could you elaborate on that?
When back, one of the things that I mentioned, that, that youth team that I had, that I mentioned that we had done a Relay for Life team, I had back whenever my daughter was in, when the kids were in like fourth or fifth grade, we started a Relay for Life team. And what, they had so much fun the first year, and as soon as it was over, they said, "What, what, what else can we do?" And so, what we did is I had a pizza party with these kids. They were just random kids. They were kids, cousins, friends. And anyway, it just kept growing and growing and growing. Anyway, but we would take and have a meeting, have a pizza, sodas, candy, and everything else, and pick what was the charity of the month. And the kids would raise funds and raise $300 for that charity, and the rest of the funds went for the Relay for Life team. Because of those things, a lot of kids ended up getting scholarships even from eighth grade. I have found that if kids are given opportunities to do good things, they will take and do good. So, we need to take and do that. In regards, that's regard, regarding activities. Kids need stuff. We need to take and come up with different kinds of job-training stuff. Most kids aren't going to be able to go to college. My kids never did. I didn't have the funds. I was working two full-time jobs and still doing volunteer stuff. Anyway, most kids don't have the ability to go to college. We need to take and have opportunities for them. We need to take and work with the schools, with the colleges, and find ways to take it where kids can get training so that whenever they're getting out of school at eighteen, they have some sort of skill that they can take and rely on if they need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more question?
Yeah, with Hanford is, I know, I don't know how they manage their budget, but with all the lawsuits that's happening in Hanford or to Hanford, they're suing Hanford. The last one that I remember was $12 million. You believe that changing the law firm that represents Hanford would help? Or do you think we should stay with the law firm that's representing Hanford right now?
At City Council meetings, one of the things that I see almost every time is I see City Council rely... I guess I've gone to almost every City Council meeting with, missing a small handful of them over the last two and a half years. I see at the City Council meeting, I see Ty, the attorney, interject his opinion. I see Sa Fuente's interject his opinion. And what ends up happening is City Council typically relies on them. And City Council hires, I mean, the manager works at the privilege of the City Council. The City Council doesn't work for him. He works for City Council. City Council is elected by the public. The City Council hires the manager. And I want you guys to understand, I've never done City Council. I've never done this at all. But I will take and learn and do what I can to where I'm the best that I can be, okay? I'm not going to say I will be the best. I'm sitting there looking at you, Patricia, and you've kicked butt. Anyway, but, but what I'm, she's the mayor of Lamore. Lamore City Council meetings, their meetings are short and sweet. It's not angry people. Whenever you go to the Hanford City Council meetings, everybody's in there angry. I don't want that. I want it to where everybody gets along. I want it to where everybody is working together. But the biggest thing to make it work together is if everybody's listening to the public and that's how we're making our decisions. If people aren't listening, if the council isn't listening to the public, ignoring them and choosing to do things that the public doesn't like, that's what makes the public mad. We just got to take and work together.
Any other questions? Kimber, you have five minutes if you'd like to close.
I just, I just want to say thank you guys for coming. I pray about it and everything else and pray about the other people that are currently running. We've got other candidates in the room right now. Adam is running, Robert Devine, I mean, Robert Thayer is running and the other City Council people, Martin and Alfred. And, but thank you guys for taking and being here. We appreciate your votes. We appreciate you turning out. Anybody you know that isn't, start asking your family and find out if they are registered. Get everybody out there to vote. If they're young especially, get them, get them involved. Help them take and do it. We will probably have some sort of a thing down here that goes over how to take and do votes or how to take and, goes over the issues and everything else where you can find out. But, oh, excuse me, and I apologize. Xavier Avila is here. And he's running for, for State Assemblyman. And he would be amazing if we get him elected. Anyway, okay? Oh, oh, hold on, hold on, hold on. And Nancy House, which is running for District C. And Judy Scott that is running. And I apologize, did I forget anybody else? Oh, Daniel Sories that's running for School Board, which I have to tell you, amazes me because him and his wife Stephanie, a few years ago, chose to put their kids in public school, I mean, in private school. And he's still running for School Board to take and make things better for our kids. And then there's other people, there's a lot of other great people in this room. Anyway, thank you guys for being here. I hope I have your vote. And if you have any questions or whatever, I've got a flyer back there, grab one. Feel free to call me anytime. Anyway, have a blessed day. Thank you.
Wow, perfect timing, perfect timing with a minute to spare. Martin, before you come up, give me just one minute. Hey, I just want to remind everybody that we are doing Town Halls for the whole month of September and into the first part of October. Next week, we have District Area C, which is Judy Scott and Nancy House. They will both, they're both here tonight, but they will be up here speaking next week, letting you know who they are and what they believe. And they are, again, looking for your questions to see how will they represent. And so please turn out. They're here. After them, we are going to have the Water Board. I'm sorry, after then, we have the Mayor coming in to give us information on Measure H. Listen, the Mayor has made it very clear to me, he is not going to promote it or disclaim it. He's going to give information so you can make a good decision. That's all it is. We want information here that helps us to vote according to what our beliefs are. And so we will have that here. Please come with your questions if you have it on Measure H. That will be in two weeks. In three weeks, we will have the Water Board. We have three candidates coming up and speaking at the Water Board. And we also have Xavier Avila also speaking at that event also. So that'll be, we have a full, fun-packed, still about three or four weeks of Town Halls to put the information out. Because one of the things that the 1776ers want to believe in wholeheartedly is that the election is the most important thing we can do as a citizen. We can vote. Our votes count. Be registered, get your friends registered and come out and vote. Be knowledgeable about who you're voting for and cast your vote according to your morality, your integrity and what you have. Martin, if you would come up? I do want to, I do want to complain one thing, Mr. Thayer, Robert. I mean, when you and I spoke last week, they did not have the disco ball going. I mean, what? What's up with that? Now you guys have the disco ball? Man, I, I think we missed out, Robert.
I was going to say karaoke.
Yeah, exactly. Well, whatever it is, whatever it is. Martin needs an introduction, but go ahead.
Now I'm going to be staring at the disco ball.
You've got, yeah, you've got 24 minutes.
All righty. Good evening. Thank you to the Sons of Liberty for putting this on and thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm Martin Devine. I am the current appointed incumbent for District B. I was appointed in June. My experience on council is, I served from 2016 to 2020 previously. After deciding with some health issues, I decided not to seek reelection. But I wanted to continue serving, so I sought and was appointed to the Planning Commission. And then a position for an alternate public member came up for LAFCO. That's the Local Agency Formation Commission with Kings County. So I applied for that. I was appointed. And then when the public member passed, I was appointed to his seat. And I served there until June. Did have to resign those two seats. But I have commitment to this city. I love the city of Hanford and I love serving the people of Hanford. I know you all know it's a wonderful place to live. And, and when I hear people talk about Hanford, when they visit here, it's the people. And I enjoy serving. My other experience would be, in, on my past term on the council, I served, we used to have liaisons on the council to different committees. I served as a liaison to Hanford Chamber of Commerce. I served as a liaison to Kings EDC. I also served a term as a liaison to Main Street Hanford. Served on KCAG for a year. That was interesting. We were doing that during COVID, so that was all via Zoom. So we actually had meetings with congresspeople back in DC and we were sitting in our homes on Zoom doing that. And what that is, is we're, they deal with transportation issues around the county. So we're trying to get funding to help with transportation issues. I also served on KCAPDA, which oversees CART back then. Recently, I made the decision to apply for the open District B seat. I'm the only one of the three people running for this seat who made that decision, who was willing to step up and put himself in a position to make some difficult decisions. As you've heard, one of those is a roundabout. That's the Downtown Improvement Project, which was voted on by, I'm going to call it the previous council before I was there. And it's my estimation that the majority of people don't want that roundabout. Well, let me make this clear, neither do I. And yes, that is coming back for a vote tomorrow. The Downtown Improvement Project, the vote we made previously was to hold off the management company for that. It threw into question the entire project. So we had to decide how we're going to move forward. So tomorrow night, city staff is bringing that back to the agenda for us to make that decision. I will not vote to move forward with a roundabout. Another issue... Another issue we have here in town is the homeless issue. That's on the agenda tomorrow night also. We are mirroring a lot of the ordinances put forth in other cities around our area after the Supreme Court made their decision, after our governor finally decided to go along with doing something about this. We are mirroring a lot of the ordinances in cities nearby to stop camping, sleeping, sitting in our public places. And on that note, I want to let business owners know, go downtown, sign the paperwork we need to do, allow our police to go onto your private property and remove homeless. Let me get into a little bit about myself. I failed to mention that. I'm a father of two, grandfather of two. My daughter Kylie has two littles of her own, Maverick and Sid. My son Aiden, pretty proud of him. He's headed into, he just started college, just graduated. Set into a law enforcement career. Tonight, I have two uncles, an aunt and a mother here in the audience. I have a family that have been here in Hanford for many years. A grandfather who ran a construction company here in town. I have another grandfather who ran two separate gas stations in the big thriving metropolis of Armona, where my dad grew up. My dad graduated in 1963 from Hanford High, my mother in 1965, and I graduated there in 1985. I didn't grow up in Hanford. I grew up in Fresno, but I got here as quickly as I could. And I love serving this city. And on that note, questions? Yes?
Man, hey, Martin, you brought that to a quick end, man. I wasn't even ready. I apologize, man.
Hey, I'm, I'm man of few words. I like to get right to the point.
Okay, all right. We have a, hopefully there's a field of questions.
Martin, my stance on the sales tax like I have over there, I don't feel that we can afford it. Our families are paying a lot of money on food, gas, electricity bills, property bills, seniors on fixed income. Families are struggling right now to make ends meet, to put food on the table. I'm imposing a sales tax for right now because, like Kimber said, we, and this gentleman said, we've lost over $12.5 million to a lawsuit. You can't ask the community to pay more, especially our seniors and our young families. What's your position on it?
Well, something I failed to mention and should have, you brought that to attention, so thank you. When the council put forth the idea of having a revenue measure committee, I applied for that committee. I was appointed. I was voted in as the chairman by the committee members. My goal there was to make sure that we were open and honest about what was moving forward. And I wanted to make sure that this wasn't something that was just being pulled over the wool, pulled over the eyes of the citizens. One thing I want to make clear is, my main goal was to make sure that anything moving forward, the citizens of Hanford voted on it. My stance on the, and let me be clear about this. I have voted for one tax in my life. Of all the taxes that have come up since I've been a registered voter, I voted for one. And that was Measure C here in Hanford, which was the cannabis tax. Only one I've ever voted for. I've never voted for a bond. I've never voted for a tax. Now, some of those bonds, I look back and I think, you know, the School Board, they did a pretty good job with that money. I'm glad they did. I look back and I say, "Well, maybe I should have voted for that. That worked out pretty good." But at the time, my thought was, "We can't afford that." But you look at the high school, look at the, look at the bowl, look at the work they've done. It's great. Sometimes if we want nice things, we have to pay for them. The tax that we're proposing is one cent on $1. And this isn't only on Hanford citizens. This is on everybody that comes to this town and spends money. And I get that we're at 7.25% here in Hanford and we will go to 8.25%. People always compare us to, they look at Corcoran and look at their parks. They're beautiful parks. They look at Kingsburg and look at their downtown and everything that's, that's there. It's beautiful. They each have an extra sales tax. We do not. One thing that we don't have is a fire department that's up to par. Our fire department is 50% below the national average. We should have six fire stations in our city. We have three. The response times are growing longer and longer because of it. Slow response times result in higher homeowners insurance. So we're going to pay whether we have this tax or not. Our police department is working out of three different buildings, two of which were never designed for police use. It's becoming inefficient. We need more police on the ground. We have five officers to patrol 60,000 people at any given time. We need to expand especially our police and fire departments. That's expensive, very expensive. When you're talking about a fire station, it's going to, the cities have to pay something called prevailing wage, if you don't know. We pay about a third more for a building than you would in the private sector. Fire and police buildings have to be, they have higher standards than any other type of buildings. It costs more to build them. It's going to cost us about 25, maybe 15, 25, 30 million dollars to build one station. Then you have to man them. It's a minimum of nine people per station. That's expensive. How are we going to pay that from our budget? Our budget is just, our general fund budget is just under $50 million. When you're talking about three fire stations and a minimum of 27 new employees, you're not going to find that in those nickels and dimes out of that $50 million. It's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. And then you have to fund a public safety building for, for a police station. You have to hire more police. We need more maintenance workers for our parks. We need more maintenance on our streets. Our streets right now, there's, there's an index, it's a PCI index that grades the quality of our roads. I just heard the other day that we have fallen, I think the national average is about a 62, 63, if I'm not mistaken. Just heard the other day, we're sitting at a 56 right now. It's gotten so expensive to build roads that it takes millions of dollars just to resurface a road anymore. That's expensive. Do I like taxes? No. Do I think we need this? I'm torn. But when I look at what we need versus what we can afford, yeah, we need to do something.
Oh, so long, is that continuation to the question?
Yes. I, I agree with you, Martin. But see, each of us have our own homes. And it's getting harder and harder to put food on our table. It's getting harder to pay for the mortgage. It's getting harder to pay, put gas in our cars. It's getting harder to put clothes on our children. You have to look at our needs, our family needs. We need to put food on the table, pay our bills. Our, how many people are over 60 here? Raise your hand. Okay, is it getting easier or harder to put food on the table, pay your bills?
Mr. Benavides, this will need to be a question.
Oh, okay. Yes. I'm sorry. I just, I just got a bat for you guys, you know? Yeah, yeah. But anyways, what were you going to tell those people who are barely making it, barely going to put food on the table, that we have to put a little bit more money into it? Because to be honest with you, I think it comes down to bad management, bad decision and this legal mess of $12.5 million. That could have paid for a lot of that stuff we're talking about right now. But now we have to up the ante on the people.
Look, let me address the $12.5 million. I wasn't there when this council made the decision to make that settlement. But it's my understanding, had they gone to court, the estimation was that they could have lost up to $50 million and that would have bankrupted this city. I'd rather, "Oh, that's what they tell me." Yes, yes. So I'm not going to take the chance of bankrupting the city when we could pay out the $12.5 million. I don't like paying out $12.5 million. I don't like the idea of that. But some mistakes were made before I was on the council in, in 2016 that carried through. And I would rather pay $12.5 million than take the risk of having to pay out $50 million that would bankrupt the city.
Thank you. One more question?
Yeah, on today's arena of today is California is a sanctuary state. So if the federal government brings people from another country, camps them out over here, gives you a ton of money and says, "Okay, you guys, take care of the problem." What will you say to the federal government when they try to do that to you?
So let me go back to the time that I was on the council. The California governor declared the state of California a sanctuary state. I led the Hanford City Council in opposing the governor declaring it a sanctuary state. We were the sixth city in California to go against the governor. I have no problem with legal immigration. Illegal immigration costs us millions, billions, actually. It's got to stop. I would not take part in that, not at all.
Mr. Schwartz? I know you have a question. I got one more question right here.
Do you believe that the city of Hanford should lease or sell its historic buildings such as the Bastille and the Courthouse? And why do you take the position that you do?
This is a very good question. And it's a tough question because those buildings are going to be extremely expensive. It's a lot of money to restore those buildings. I know when we, we looked at the air conditioning system alone for the Courthouse, back when I was on the council, that was $2 million. The guestimation now is about $4 million for that air conditioning system alone. I don't like the idea of selling the buildings, but we can take an example from Kings County, who just renovated a building using a public-private partnership. And that's where we lease the building to a company that renovates the building, leases the building out to other clients and the city takes ownership. And I believe it's after a number of years, 30 years or so, the city takes ownership of the building again. That can be done in order to get those buildings renovated and keep our historical buildings in this town. We need to think outside the box and look at other avenues of getting things done rather than just sell, sell, sell.
Thank you. Next question?
Same topics. So talk to us about transparency, what that means to you, how you'd conquer it. Talk about, you mentioned like boards and things that you've been in. Talk to us about your work experience, your education. The other two had conquered those that helped us to make a decision to vote you in into this leadership type of brawl.
I've touched a little on my experience as a former city councilman and being on the various boards. Let me get to the transparency issue. Transparency, to me, is extremely important and something we're currently working on at the council. We, we have a lot to do. I, for example, just recently, I had an issue with a street light that was blinking on and off all night. So I asked city staff, "How do I address this?" And I was told, "Those now belong to SCE. There's a link on our website. Just click the link." So I went to the website. 20 minutes later, I found the link. It's not working. That's, that's not transparency. I'm glad the link was there, but had I just given it some thought and said, "Why don't I just go straight to SCE", I would have been able to complete that in maybe a minute. There's no reason I should go to that website and have a difficult time finding anything. Recently, we, we had the warrant registers put back on the agenda because they were taken off. People were curious why they were gone. They want to see it. We had them put back on. It was part of moving towards more transparency. But the warrant registers have been available on the website this entire time. Anybody could go look at them, if you could find them. So, yeah, we need to become more transparent and we're working on that. We're working towards that.
All right.
Do I have any more time?
Oh, you still have time and there's still more questions. Come on, Martin. Take it easy, Martin. Next question.
My question to you is, are you a leader or are you a follower?
Not very good at following.
Give this example where you stood alone against other board members on an important issue.
Oh, gosh. There was times that I couldn't really... There was times that, I, I couldn't really pinpoint one time. There, there was a lot of times. One, one thing that I, I led, and I just spoke about it, was against the sanctuary state. I came to the council and said, hey, this is going on. Let's make a resolution against this. This doesn't make any sense. So I did lead that charge against it. I also was, um, in, in the minority on the marijuana issue. I did not want to legalize marijuana in the city of Hanford. And it came down to, well, now, you know, we don't really have a choice. The state has, has made more than just medical marijuana legal. But it came down to the last vote. And I can do math. I knew the vote was going to be 3-2 if I voted no. Now, a council member can bring back an issue if he has voted for it. That last vote, I voted yes. Because if there was any chance of getting rid of this, I wanted to be able to do that. I could bring that back. If I voted no, I wouldn't be able to bring that issue back at all. And I couldn't do anything about it. But it got taken out of my hands anyway because the state of California did what they did. And you'll find with city government, county government, that happens a lot. The state of California creates a lot of problems.
We still have time for a few more questions. I have a follow-up question here by Mr. Jordan. I've got Mr. Ayers going in, and then I got Rusty Robinson here. I've got four questions, and I should take it up. We've got about five minutes left, if you can keep them concise.
All right.
So regarding your vote, you, you say that the last situation, you said that the state took it out of your hand. The other issue, uh, what was the final vote on it?
Which?
The other issue that you said you stood against other council members.
Sanctuary. Sanctuary state, it was unanimous. We sent a resolution to the state. We were the sixth city in California to do that.
What I'm trying to get at is that was there a place where you, the lone vote, where you resisted the other four and you stood alone to make a vote? Is there such a situation that you can share with us? Because we need somebody who has courage.
Well, there was not. Most votes on the city council are 5-0. I don't know how the other council members are going to vote, but I know how I'm going to vote. And I'm not going to vote against everybody just to vote against them. There was no time that it was just myself alone.
Okay, next question?
Okay, Martin, you win the race. Two months later, you've got, you know, goals and objectives. And everybody's going to be throwing stuff on the mudboard, see what sticks. What's going to be your three top priorities that you're going to hope that you can get the rest of the council to be on board and move forward with those ideas?
Well, I'm certainly not going to move out of town, like some have done. One is balanced budget. Bring more business to town. And that is occurring. You, you've seen the new Hanford logo. That was designed to market Hanford. City council, before I was there, decided to start marketing our city in order to bring more business to town, bring restaurants, other businesses here. They go to these conferences where they speak to different businesses and market Hanford, sell Hanford. And that needs to continue to grow our city. The state of California mandates that we have to grow. We have to build houses. We have to keep expanding. One of my other goals would be to make sure that we do that in a good manner. That we're not, I, we, face it, we've got water issues around here. But the state doesn't seem to care about our water issues. And I don't want to get in water. That's, it's a whole different ballgame. But, um, I think we need to take slow, calculated growth and bring more businesses to town and work on our budget.
Thank you. Next question, please?
Yeah, Martin, the Hidden Valley Park expansion is in your district. What is your position for it to get completed?
I'll be very honest about Hidden Valley Park and the 18 acres next to it. I've been on both sides of this issue. And frankly, when it comes right down to it, I would like to see something get done. If we can find the money to build out that 18 acres, let's get it done. There's no money available through grants for parks in that area. The median income in that area is too high to qualify for grants, unfortunately. We're going to have to find some other way to do that. So whether we need to think outside the box, I know there's, there's been one suggestion of setting up a, um, sort of like a landscape assessment district to assess funds for that park. I'm not exactly enamored with that, and I doubt it would pass. But we need to start thinking outside the box to find a solution if we're going to build out that park. We've been sitting on that land for 57 years. I'm 57 years old. We've been arguing about that land. I believe the argument started in 1976. The city does have a plan for that going forward. We've seen three or five different drawings and different ideas. The Parks and Rec Department did put out three community meetings and have people come there and give their input at what they'd like to see there. All of that stuff is very expensive. So we've, we've got to take a look, a serious look at that, a common sense look at that, and see what we can do moving forward.
Technical difficulties, sorry. I'm going to sneak one in on you, Martin. I got a suggestion for Hidden Valley Park since I got all the city council candidates here. I propose that we use that big section to put a lake in Hanford. Make fishing great again. And don't, uh, and, and he's not kidding.
Yeah. I'm, I'm frankly surprised he didn't say a hunting preserve or something along those lines.
That was a statement. We have enough time. I have two people lined up with questions now, maybe three. If you make them quick, we can go through it all.
Uh, Martin, regarding Hidden Valley Park, did you not vote with Sue Sorenson to make Hidden Valley Park surplus property as it is right now? Did you vote that way? And did you vote, did you state once before on a city council meeting that you wanted to sell the Hidden Valley property? Is that correct?
As I said earlier, I've been on both sides of this issue, and that is correct. I did vote to sell, to put that on as surplus property, so it could be sold. And I did vote with Sue Sorenson to do that, yes. As I said, I've been on both sides of the issue. My main goal is to get something done so we stop arguing about it. We need more parkland, so if we can find the money to turn that into parkland, let's do it. If we cannot afford to do that, we need to do something with that land. There are people that live next door to that park that do not want to park there because of the parking issues and the noise and everything else. However, there's people that live near that land that want to park there. So let's do something. Let's stop arguing about it. Let's stop kicking it down, kicking the bucket down the road, and let's get something done. That, back then, that was my goal. The most logical thing at that time was to sell the land because we did not have the money to complete it. But we're working now to find that money. So let's move forward with that, and let's get something done.
Thank you. Next question?
Martin, uh, the, the lawsuits, getting back to that. Uh, I'm, I'm under the understanding that the city is only responsible for $100,000 of that. So it doesn't really matter if we lose 12 and a half million or 50 million. The city is only responsible for $100,000. So because council isn't prepared, because of the council not wanting to say, okay, hey, the buck stops here, let's fight it. It doesn't really matter if it's 12 or 50. Is that correct?
No. That particular lawsuit came straight out of our general fund. We do have liability insurance up to $100,000. Once we hit that threshold, most of these lawsuits fall to the insurance company to make a decision whether we're going to fight or not. It kind of comes out of council's hands. We, we, we can make a suggestion to them that we'd like to fight, but they're the ones that are paying out that money after that first $100,000. So they kind of make that decision. With that Helena lawsuit, that did not qualify for coverage of our liability insurance. So that 12 and a half million came out of our general fund. If we had lost $50 million, it would have come out of our general fund.
Next question, please?
I read the other day that the city of Hanford is missing a bunch of money. They cannot find it. It came from the cannabis revenue? Do you know anything about that? And do you know where the money went?
It's not in my bank account, I can tell you that. I have not heard that. I'm, I'm not aware of that at all, but I will look into that. I, I think it may, it, it could be that the cannabis, people have said that the cannabis money was supposed to be a separate line item or was supposed to be for this, was supposed to be for that. Well, the council never voted for, for those things to occur. So it could simply be that it's in the general fund and it's hard to find an accounting of that. But I will look into that because I am not aware of that. I have not heard that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're down to, I got the last two questions. I'll end right there. And then we'll have your closing statement.
A follow-up. He's going to get you. So going back to my statement before about being able to stand alone, Mr. Lou Martinez has stood alone for several years on issues representing the people. And we want council people that are going to do something similar. And my quest, question to you is, do you have that courage to stand alone?
Well, let me be clear, Lou Martinez is not alone. Not anymore, not since June. I'm there. And will I stand alone? I don't have to because I have Lou Martinez there. I have Travis Paden there. I'm not standing alone, and neither are they.
Thank you. This will be the last question here?
Martin?
No.
This, this, you know, the city is, is planning to spend somewhere between 20 and 40 million dollars on a park on the east side of town. You, you know that they've spent millions of dollars in the last two years on Centennial Park, uh, the basketball courts downtown, Earl F. Johnson Park, Long Field. Millions, okay? Clovis built a 12.6 acre park in the early 2000s for $665,000. Even in today's money, it would be what, a million, a million and a half? My question is, uh, Hidden Valley could be phased in in a slow process. Millions have been spent on other parks. 20 to 40 million is being allocated for the future East Side Park. How do you justify all that?
Most of what you're talking about is maintenance on existing parks. That money is budgeted to take care of those parks. If we had not redone the basketball courts at Earl F. Johnson, we would have people here tonight asking me why we didn't redo the basketball courts. I had people calling me. I wasn't even on the council at the time. I had people calling me about it. What can we do about this? So things like that need to be taken care of. The 20 to 40 million you're talking about for the new park, we don't have that money. We can't budget that. There is no money to build the new park. Money that's coming in for that park is coming in in form of grants. And I know our parks director is working hard to find those grants. There are no grants available for Hidden Valley, unfortunately. If we want to move forward with that, we're going to have to find, like I said, we're going to have to work outside the box to find ways to fund that. Or we rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, and we take money from the park fund, which is from impact fees for other parks in other neighborhoods. New neighborhoods are going in, and they pay fees to have parks put in their neighborhoods. Do we steal that money to build Hidden Valley? And then they don't have a neighborhood park or they don't have a, a pocket park in their neighborhood? Is that fair to them?
Okay, is that your, that, okay. Anything you'd like to close about a minute?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that if, you know, back, back there on the table, some information about me. There's, uh, my business cards, my phone number's available, my email address is available. Uh, when I got elected in 2016, the first thing I did was put my phone number out there because I heard from people while I was out knocking doors that we can't get ahold of our council members. So I made my phone number available. I will have my, my phone number will be available going forward. You can call me anytime. You can text me, you can email me, you can find me on social media. If I don't have an answer, I'll get an answer. Transparency is number one with me. And I'd just like to point out that I have experience. I can deal with these issues. One thing that I believe lacks in government, especially in California, and one thing that I strive for is common sense. There's just not enough of it in government anymore. And commitment. I've been committed to the city of Hanford, serving the city of Hanford for a number of years now. I enjoy it, I like serving, and I'd like to continue serving you. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Devine. Well, thank you, everybody. That, uh, rounds up our town hall. I want to just remind people, like I said, it'll be an entire month, a little over a month, that we will have town halls to inform the public of the candidates, their positions, and you the opportunity to question them. Uh, if you'd like to please stand, we're going to close in prayer. Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for who you are. We thank you for your Holy Spirit to give us wisdom and discernment. We ask you, as we take each, each, each statement from, from these candidates, the questions they answered, how they answered them, as we take them to heart, Lord, that you would stir up within our spirit, Father, who is the right one to vote for. Father, just direct us and lead us into your truths. And as we seek and follow your truths, Lord, we will vote accordingly. Father, in the name of Jesus, Father, I just pray over Kings County. I pray over the city of Hanford that there be a blessing over it, that right now, that the people will rise up and proclaim your name above all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. God bless you. We hope that-